Yes, good evening. Fortunately, we still have power after it's been just a day.
You've got ten points.
I'm surprised you're here today.
Glad you were able to make it.
Same. Oh, yeah, we're really good.
So you'll be able to stay with more of us.
I think it's much in our location.
Yes.
How is it?
Nothing on there.
Pretty weird in the guy.
There's a lot of girl. At least not with David. How much they got something open up?
A little pregame.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January sixth, twenty twenty five city council work session. We would ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices. It's really good to see everybody and wish everybody a Happy New Year. Seems like it's been a while for a little vacation period for everybody. So thanks for being here. As we, as we move into the agenda, we'll start with item A on the agenda. Twenty twenty five federal advocacy agenda. At this time, we recognize our Assistant City Manager, Rachel Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening. Before you in your packets, you'll see the federal priorities for the one hundred and nineteenth Congress that were put together by Ferguson Group, our contract lobbyists for federal items out of D.C. Jennifer Ema is our point person with that firm. And I've asked her to walk through, really the highlights, the changes that you'll see from this proposed advocacy agenda from the last one that you all approved. So Jennifer, can I take it away and go through those highlights? Does the council have any questions that may happen?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And y'all can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're going to see y'all. Happy New Year. And thank you for the opportunity to kind of go through some of the updates that we have to the federal agenda. And I'm not going to go through every line item, but please feel free to ask a question while we're talking or afterwards, whatever works for you. So with the Western Electric project, obviously, this is an ongoing priority for the city. One of the things that has sort of risen to a level of priority is to ensure that any remediation standards are enhanced from industrial to residential. We've been in communication, of course, you know, with the butts, but also with our congressional delegation, mainly Senator Bud's office, you know, who historically been very supportive of this particular project. So what we've decided to do is kind of utilize our congressional support for this after we have kind of gotten an idea of where the Department of Defense is going to come on this. Like if we need congressional support for this ask, we got it and it's in the lanes. But we're sort of, we're going to sort of take our, our steps here and, and ask for the enhanced standards directly to DOD. And then, of course, if we need help, we've got congressional help. So on to affordable housing. Kudos to Craig and the team for getting Burlington designated as the lead agency of the consortium to, to receive HUD home funds. Now, we need to make sure that we keep the program adequately funded for both home and CBBG, both of which are very important to the city. But we were happy to be a conduit of sorts between the congressional delegation and HUD, but most of the work was done there locally. So again, congrats and, and good job on that. That's pretty much it on affordable housing. And one other thing I will say is there was a tax bill passed in the House last summer that included some changes to the low income housing tax credit that would make it more favorable for developers to utilize the, the li-tech tax incentive. And so it did not actually get any traction in the Senate, the tax bill generally. But we will likely see a reconciliation bill, if not two, in the first quarter of this year with Republican majority in the House, Senate, and of course, in, in the Oval Office. And so we expect tax legislation to be part of that. And one of the things that we want to continue to ensure is that that li-tech policy change that opens it up to more use is included in any tax bill. The next, the real changes for under homelessness, the only change or couple of changes under livability in these lives. We, over the last two years, requested funds for the downtown streetscape and utilities project. Those projects have not been, that project has not been funded in, in the last two appropriations cycles. We do have a fiscal year twenty twenty six appropriation cycle that will likely will occur in March. And so it's, you know, we may try again to secure earmark funds for that particular project. You have a new house member, Richard Hudson, who historically has only done military-related earmarks. And so, you know, we would really have, and Senator Bud does not participate earmarking process. Senator Tillis is where we would need to lean on this particular project. So we just kind of need to be strategizing on which projects are going to be the most competitive with each of the offices, you know, knowing what their preferences are. So the, the next thing is the, your MPO has received a Safe Streets and Roads Were All Planning grant. But where the real dollars are are the implementation dollars. So basically, what they did is they received a hundred forty thousand dollars approximately to create a safety action plan. And then when you go to implement parts of that safety action plan, that's really where the money comes in. So there's going to be multiple programs that were created in bipartisan infrastructure law that are not authorized. So they were funded in the transition, I'm sorry, in the bipartisan infrastructure law. And unless they get permanently authorized, they will not continue. This is a product of a program that we plan to advocate for permanent authorization because it is a really good program for safety improvements at the local government level. Next, under water and wastewater, no changes to the, to the agenda. I will just say, you know, there's going to be a lot of regulatory rollback under the Trump administration. There could be potentially some action called the Congressional Review Act, which could nullify some of the regulations that were put in place under the Biden administration. The, I think PFAS is going to be an issue where they're not going to completely disseminate and, and, and get rid of all of the regulations related to PFAS because those certainly a significant safety issue. But there may be some flexibilities that we could see for local governments under the Trump administration. Let's see, on to transportation. The, you know, the city and your, the, the MPO, it's my understanding, you finalized the five-year transit development plan and transit facility study. So what we may do is identify some projects that we could be trying to access federal funds for, whether it's through the appropriations process or from, you know, competitive grants. There are a lot of competitive grants out there. So, you know, that is a possibility. And then the, the other two, the Royal Retreat Road and Copper Street, interchange of our carriers from last year that remain a priority. And we're just going to kind of keep our eyes and ears open for, for funding opportunities to address those two priorities. No changes in parks and rec. The only change in IT is that the city was awarded a state local cybersecurity grant from the state. This is another program that was created in the Inflation Reduction Act, actually. They created the state local cybersecurity grant program, which each state that applies to the federal government for funds. And then the states then sub-grant those funds to local governments to really shore up their IT systems. And so, you know, against, you know, any sort of cybersecurity threat. Again, the, the city, one, one award, in my understanding, is applying for another. Applications are due at the end of this month. Then, under police, we have an earmark that was secured for the CAD RNS system. And then we have an earmark that's pending in fiscal year twenty twenty five appropriations. And so that, you know, that bill has been, the fiscal year twenty twenty five appropriations bill is included in the continuing resolution that is granted that keeps the federal government open until March fourteenth. There's no indication that we'll lose that particular earmark since we just kind of keep extending it. We, you know, all, you know, everything that we've read and discussed is that we will get, those earmarks will be included even though we're in a new administration. So we were really excited about the fact that Senator Tillis took this project as a, made this a priority and actually submitted a request for six million dollars, which is what we had asked for. And we, and we did some debriefing with his office. And unfortunately, instead of the subcommittee coming back and saying, hey, that amount was too high, can you scale it back? They just didn't include it in the Senate appropriations bill, which they were very frustrated about. The Senator Tillis's office, and of course, we were too. So to have him advance six million dollars for this project was a huge win. And then we were very disappointed. So Rachel can attest, we were shocked. So, but anyway, we do have still a bunch of money in the way that's pending. We, then that's it for police. We've got some, the fire department has some legislation that they are interested in continuing to support. And then, you know, going on to tax priorities. You know, as I mentioned, the reconciliation bill that's going to focus on tax priorities. We tried to identify some of the, the programs that were most beneficial to the city of Burlington and local governments around the country. One of those, again, was supporting, and we had this on the agenda before, but the preservation of taxes that municipal bonds and reinstating a process called advanced refunding, which I won't get into all the details. Happy to if you want, but it's a little boring. And then, and then eliminating or increasing the state local tax deduction. If you'll recall, there used to not be any cap on state and local tax deduction for federal taxes. And the Tax Cut and Jobs Act from twenty seventeen limited it to ten, ten thousand dollars. And then, again, we mentioned the low income housing tax credit, making sure that tax legislation includes that. They increased the number of nine percent housing tax credit. And then there was another program that was created under the Inflation Reduction Act, which essentially is, it's a, it's a tax deduction for local governments. But of course, you're not a taxable entity. So how would you get a tax deduction? You actually get a direct payment from the Department of Treasury for certain clean energy investments, whether it's solar, wind, battery storage, EV-related projects, clean vehicles for your city fleets. Now, you can actually, if you have spent that money, it's, you know, again, it's like, like adding a, a tax credit to your tax filing. But instead, it's showing the Department of Treasury how to use their funds. And then they, they will give you a direct payment, which would be the equivalent for tax deduction. So those are kind of the, the primary issues that we were focusing on for tax priorities. Again, we, the, the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act, we really want to be proactive in making sure that those programs that were created, that are most beneficial to local governments remain. You know, we're not here to fight the, the, the big fight for all impacted entities. But we certainly want to make sure that those programs that most benefit local governments remain. So that is the spiel. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the recap. Any questions from Councilor Stapp?
Jennifer, one thing, ARP funds, obviously, we filed twenty twenty five, twenty six. The status of that in terms of expectations, as I understand, the original bill, by the end of twenty six, everything had to be cleared out. How about projects that's not, won't be completed by then?
And I'm so sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
What happens? What happens if projects have been funded, but due to just construction challenges, won't be completed by the end of twenty six?
Yeah, I mean, this is an issue all over the country. I'm sorry, somebody else said.
No, you're good, you're good.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, this is an issue across the country, to be honest, with communities. I, there have been, there have been a lot of efforts to extend those deadlines. We still, we still have some time to try to extend them. They had to be augmented by the end of last year, of course. But, you know, then you've got to actually spend the money. And I understand with delays, et cetera, that's been increasingly difficult. You know, I think that it would be very difficult for the federal government to claw back any of those funds. I don't think they're available in perpetuity. But, you know, we need to try our hardest to get projects completed by that date. But if it's, you know, if it is impossible, I think we need to talk with your delegation about the need to extend the deadline. Because the more communities they hear from, sort of the, the stronger allies we're going to have for moving the date.
Any other questions?
But it's, it's definitely something that's impacting communities all over the country, so.
Just going to get everything done, buddy. Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate you being with us.
Absolutely. I hope you all have a great meeting. Thank you for including me.
You, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Our next item, item B, is voluntary contiguous annexation of Route seventy five nineteen Eaglewood Road, parcel ID two two nine four four one, and Zero Road, Charleston Lane, parcel ID one oh six, one oh five. At this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jimmy Lawson. Happy New Year, Jamie.
Happy New Year, Mr. Lawson. Good to see you all. This, this item is, is really tied to two items that you're going to hear about later during the Planning and zoning commission summary report. But I'll just mention them to you as a precursor. So you've got two parcels here that are shown, highlighted in the teal outlines. They are located just north of Mattoch, north and west of Mattoch, at the end of the cul-de-sac on Eaglewood Road. A portion of the property is in Gilford County, a portion of the property is in Alamance County, within the Burlington ETJ. These are properties that are tied to a rezoning request. The rezoning requests are case number twenty four oh twelve and eleven, that you'll hear about later on. Essentially, these properties are contiguous to existing city limits to the south. And so Planning and Zoning Commission heard, or heard the rezoning requests at their December meeting and recommended the rezonings. And this would be the subsequent annexation request tied to those rezonings in order to provide water and sewer to the properties. So at this point, we will be suggesting the annexation for a future public hearing date, should the council decide to do so, that would then coincide the same night with the rezoning request. We've had this similar circumstance on other rezonings and annexations as well. So this is not really that unique, but we're hearing about the annexation first.
And this is going to be in addition to, is that the public hearing? Is that, is there a question?
Yes, yes, we have a request for tomorrow night, a resolution to set the public hearing date for February fourth.
Any questions on that, everybody?
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, sir. Next, item item C is downtown water and sewer construction contract. At this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Water Resources and Engineering, Marlon Tast.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. Back in February twenty three, I believe, was, Council awarded a contract to Withers and Ravenall to do the design for the water and sewer replacement downtown. We've received a ten million dollar allocation from the General Assembly through the state budget process to go towards that project. That ten million was initially a very rough preliminary estimate that was prepared when, as Jennifer Ema was talking about federal earmarks, when those came back. That was part of that discussion. We had an estimate from twenty twenty two, and that's what that, that number was based on. So we've gone through the, the design, put the project out for bid in November. We actually only had one bidder. So on formal construction contracts like that, we can't open with just one bidder. So we had to follow the general statute and re-advertise. So we've set a date to open bids in December. We were told that while there was a lot of interest for the project, we were competing with other projects and a lot of contractors had worked. And they were concerned that they wouldn't be able to complete the project by the end of twenty twenty six. But this is tied through the state's article. However, when we rebid in December, we did get three interesting contractors. We opened bids. The lowest response bidder was Jimmy Lynch and Sons from Pilot Mountain. And that little bid was thirteen million, seven hundred eighty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars. So obviously considerably more than our ten million dollar funding. But again, that's compared to a twenty twenty two very rough estimate. This was incorporating a cool design of what it would take to replace its mine, that, that, that competition for contractors and materials and considerable construction inflations in the last three and a half years. So we've talked with, with Withers and Ravenall to see if there was a way to reduce that option. And this map shows the, it's a little bit hard to see, I understand, but the blue lines, which are water, green lines are sewer. And those are the lines supposed to be replaced roughly in the area bounded by Church Street, Morehead, Lexington, and Webb Avenue, with no work occurring in Church Street or, or Webb Avenue. So Withers came back and said that we could remove Morehead Street and Lexington Avenue and reduce by about two million dollars. So it would still be over the funding. And those are actually some of the lines that probably would be a higher, or are a higher priority as far as needing replaced. Because those were in the perimeter of downtown, that's why those were selected. So in talking with, with Craig and Peggy, we determined that probably the best route would be to go ahead and, and keep the project as a whole, move funds from the Water and Sewer Capital Reserve to cover the difference. So that's, we have an agenda item tomorrow to request approval, to award, tender award of the contract, depending on state approval and legal financing approval of the contract to Jimmy Arlynch for the thirteen point seven million and additional budget amendment to move the funds. Altogether, it's about a fifteen billion dollar project when you consider the engineering fees and some contingency costs.
So I think way back when we first started talking about this, we always knew it was going to be higher than the ten million. It's just how, how much higher. And the reality of it is, the fifteen million or thirteen seven, the project proper, we were going to have to do something anyway. I mean, is that not factual?
Yes. Most of these lines are anywhere from sixty to seventy to eighty years old. We have periodic problems with, especially with water lines. And it's evading some of the sewer lines that definitely needs some attention. It's work that needs to be done.
So from a fiscal standpoint, we've, it's just a matter of business practice. We've put money back in our capital reserve water sewer for this particular purpose. We just happened to get a ten million dollar head start.
Very good.
Yep. I like the head start.
Yeah, pretty good start, really.
Pretty good.
Well, I have a good question about why all of here compared to, say, other parts of the city, that lines are probably just as old. What's our response to that?
Well, first, the utility system kind of grew from downtown and went out. So we do have some older lines, but a lot of those have been replaced. It's kind of easier to replace them than this targeted area downtown because this will be a disruptive project. It's going to impact traffic. It's going to impact partially our businesses. We're working on a communication plan, coordination plan, to maintain those access to the businesses. But at the same time, the street's going to be torn up to replace the water line. So we'll work with the contractor to strategically work, kind of block to block, or two blocks to two blocks, to coordinate that work. But I think that's been the challenge of, we need to replace these lines downtown. How do you do it? And. And rather than doing a line for two a year, it's just been put off to now we have the opportunity to do it all at once, more or less.
Because if you did this in segments like we would do in other areas, other areas of the city, it would be a pain in your project. I mean, it would always be chaos. And doing it this way, at least we can just kind of knock it out.
Where is the timeline for this?
So with the urban funding tied to this, we have to have complete construction complete for the water and sewer, and funds expended by the end of calendar year 26. So we're working more or less on that timeline.
When would we...from a planning standpoint, what do we think we'd start the project?
So once we award the contract, we'll set up some meetings with the contractor, get it scheduled. I would anticipate some kind of work beginning in the March-April timeframe and carry it through. They could probably, and not speaking to the contractor, I think we could probably get started on the sewer work earlier than the water line.
Okay. Any other question on this request? For lines in the sidewalk in the street, so?
So the main lines are all within the street, between curb to curb. Then we'll also be replacing the lateral lines and water service lines to the meter. So there'll be some impacts to sidewalks with temporary repairs.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next item, item D, Boards and Commissions Report. At this time, we'll recognize our Director of Transportation, Mike Devon, known for Traffic Commission. Mike?
Two quick items for you this evening. The first one will start with the Oak Park unit. This is the Presbyterian Church on West Pitt Street. This came from the property owners. And also talking, the meeting was pretty interesting. This start is our 70-foot clear distance on both sides from the driveway. This is due to some changes in parking in the church. They don't have as much parking or allowed parking in there during the week for some liability issues. So during the course of the meeting, during public commentary, to accommodate the neighborhood, we reduced that down to 35 feet. Everyone felt like that would accommodate what they needed in the parking lot. And here, some of these cars, vehicles, like the left, we relocated, but just didn't want to make a major impact on the neighborhood to go 70, because that's our typical standard from the driveway. Your side distance.
You're talking about the driveway going into the parking lot, or you're talking about from the stop sign?
Probably right, this red here from here, 35 feet to 35 feet this way.
There's no parking?
There'd be no parking. There'll be signs that say no parking in 20 signs. You have clear side distance. It was becoming, you can imagine, vehicles are parked here and here. It's kind of safety issue, dangerous, especially in some sewers and things like that.
Yep.
So that was approved unanimously by the Traffic Commission. Second item is an always-stop request. This is Willbrook Sunset. Church Street's on here, just beyond Church Street. This is sort of a misaligned intersection, if you really can see the way it sits currently. Right now, we have two stop signs in place. There's an existing stop sign here, existing stop sign here. Talking to the residents again, more bicycle pedestrian activity with our breathing going in place. And as you can see, we don't really have any markings or false walks and lack of stop control to approaches. So we felt like this would be a good improvement. And what you see here is what will be installed. We'll add some additional striping, add new stop signs on all four approaches. We'll put the stop signs in place so we always stop, and that's going to please the residents and the activists that have requested it. So there were no comments at the meeting otherwise against it.
So if we put additional striping in, will it look more pedestrian friendly the way we do the construction?
It'd be more obvious, as I like to say, is you see something there versus just an intersection. See, we'll carry these double yellow back on the stop sign, have a stop bar.
Mike, have that pedestrian traffic come in the neighborhood to our left?
Yeah, we don't really have a lot of...you mean this way?
Yeah.
The sidewalk infrastructure's not, um, exists robust in that area, but that's another... So we didn't have a lot of pedestrians, or we managed pedestrian access. There's certainly walking to the arboretum. This will help, you know, stop traffic if we will, versus what's going to occur there right now. This was also, you know, Mr. Reckon, for your consent of the morning. Ask you any other questions?
Any other questions? And then we have Planning and Zoning. Sean, this is the...in relation to item D, I guess. Is that correct?
Yes, there's those and one other. Okay, so the first item in the rezoning request is off of Garden Road, in proximity to the back entrance to Alamance Crossing. Initially, the set of properties are shown here in teal. I'm sort of circulating the mouse over the area. The properties are currently in the medium density residential zoning district. Initially, the rezoning request also included this other parcel that came off Fairview Drive, but the applicant has removed that parcel. They have requested to change the zoning to general business limited use. The number of uses and what the applicant has proposed has changed pretty significantly, even after the most recent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in December. So at this point, the applicant has reduced their request only to multifamily through a limited use rezoning request. Okay? You'll see in your packet, there are a number of other uses. I didn't have time to update the staff reports, because this happened very, very recently. So that is the request that will be in front of you for consideration. Staff has made a recommendation to have this item placed on your agenda for January 21st. Any questions on this one?
So P&amp;Z's decision on it?
They did not recommend it, but that was with a number of other 39 uses, which even was reduced another time. So they...the members of the public who live in this area of Westview Terrace and Fairview Drive were in attendance to the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. There were several meetings, and were very vocal about their...this pleasure of commercial development, access to Westview Terrace, intrusion into their residential neighborhood. So a neighborhood meeting was held, subsequent meetings where the applicant reduced the uses, but at the Planning and Zoning Commission, what they heard was commercial and other types of uses, not just the multifamily. The applicant has contested to that after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting based upon feedback they had.
So now it's one use?
That is correct.
So I have heard some feedback from some of the community about this project. Can we get a summation of what P&amp;Z's heard saw versus what it is now prior to our...
Yes. This slide represents all of the uses within the general business zoning district, and this was one of the initial slides. This then got pared down even further, and now we're at the point where we're only...the applicant is only considering, is going to be free to consider one use.
One use. And the density is 24 units, is that what it is on the previous?
The density, if the zoning was accrued, would go from 4.85 units per acre, so roughly five units, to 24 units per acre. And so depending upon land that might be yielded out for roads and other infrastructure, maybe a max of 20 units. Hard to say. We don't have a development plan that we've looked at, that they've provided showing the yield, but that's what the density would allow for up to that number.
Which would do with zoning across the street?
Right, right. It's definitely more compatible, in my opinion, than the series of uses that they had proposed previously, and staff had recommended the reduction of many uses. The neighbors also were pretty adamant about that. So in...this property, you know, serves as a buffer between the other commercial properties in the area, the apartment buildings, the proximity to Alamance Crossing, but the once-what-half is established residential neighborhood right behind it. So certainly, they were not interested in seeing a lot more traffic and intrusion into their development.
But the neighborhood has not seen this move?
They have not...this occurred after the Planning and Zoning Commission.
They haven't seen it in a P&amp;Z, in a formal meeting process, but the applicant could have shared it with them since then.
Sorry.
Could have, could have, don't know the deal.
And this is not uncommon for the applicants to continue to reduce their uses based upon feedback after the fact. They're not required to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission when they reduce uses. They're only required if they're added uses back in.
That owner's had that property for a number of years in the corner, if you recall.
Correct. Used to be a house there, they moved it.
And you moved it?
Yeah.
And actually, some of that conversation along Alamance Crossing was being designed, constructed in terms of roadway that basically runs a blower that property.
I recall there was a point in time that they came to us trying to get it resented strictly to GB, I guess. And I think they ended up pulling it, but certainly all those potential uses, which just showed that they're in the number one, is a lot more digestible. I can certainly understand why. Now, I was getting some phone calls from that.
It's a pretty significant modification.
It's a pretty busy intersection there, too. If you look at it.
It is. All right, any questions for Jamie?
Okay, and then the last two sort of combined in the discussion together, because they are interrelated, although they're two separate parcels. So this goes back to those parcels that we talked about earlier for the annexation request. And you can see, this is the existing zoning map. So McIntosh on Lake is to the south, all in this orange shade. This portion here is all in Guilford County, so you've got access to this area off of Carriage Way, down at the end of Inglewood Road. Half of the property is in Guilford County, in this agricultural zone, and then the other half is in the city, in our ETJ, the medium industrial zone. So this is the same property owner, just two different jurisdictions. In total, it is roughly 15 acres in total. This is one of the parcels, and then the next slide shows the second parcel and the relative requests. The applicant is seeking to rezone both properties to medium density residential. So both properties, the ag and the medium industrial, are recommended by the applicant to go to medium density residential. Just in terms of summary, you'll see this in your staff report and the packet. The properties along Inglewood Road have county zoning ranging between 30,000 and 40,000 square foot lots. The area to the south is as low as 5,000 square foot lots, so it's much more condensed, much more clustered development compared to what is immediately adjacent to the proposed rezoning. But through the annexation request, that is also tied to these cases, water and sewer would become available, which supersedes the existing development that's there right now that are on Septic and Well. All of these homes here that were built some time ago are not on public infrastructure, hence the larger lots, larger lots. And then the request to these properties would be...there's no limited use. It would be open to any use allowed within the medium density residential zoning district, but the maximum density would be 4.3 units per acre. So you can estimate somewhere between 20 and 40 units per acre, depending upon the configuration. Again, we haven't seen any requests. You know, looking at the aerial, there is a stubout here, so it does seem to indicate, oftentimes they do, stubouts indicate future development to other areas. So from a future land use designation perspective, moving into medium density residential would be more consistent with the suburban residential to the south. And the medium industrial rezoning just doesn't make sense for the area as standalone rezoning designation. Staff does recommend the rezoning request. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended unanimously this request as well. So we have suggested that this item, these three items, would be on the February 4th City Council date for public hearing. You would essentially hear the rezoning request first, then followed by the annexation request. Any questions on this?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item, item D, is our City Manager's Report. At this time, we'll recognize City Manager, Greg McHale.
Thank you, Mr. Grant Council, and happy to be here to everybody. Do want to introduce you to a couple of new faces that you may see. Beth, would you like to introduce Haley?
Absolutely. So Haley Burgess is our new Deputy City Clerk, and she's excited to be here. She's been here for three weeks now, going on a board week. Yep, and so your agenda materials were wonderfully put together by Ms. Burgess, and she is very thrilled to be here and to meet you all.
She's a good USC Pittsburgh graduate, that's what. But I also want to introduce, we're very excited to introduce Adam Shul as our new Economic Development Director. This is Adam. Adam is a former Assistant Planning Director for the Piedmont Regional Council Government, lots of local government experience. He's also worked with ARPA Funding and with NC Pro, and he's got a lot of different experience, experience, and I truly must say, he was worth the wait. So Adam, did you want to say anything?
Just thank you, glad to join the team. I was really impressed with everyone when interviewing and getting to talk to folks who just know the city better. Coming from a regional form of government where Burlington is a member government, I feel like I have some knowledge already and familiarity, so it feels good to get involved here on the ground level and was excited to get started.
We're welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
We're excited. Now, we're just going to get you busy.
That's right.
Do we plan to do that?
We've got plans. But also did want to introduce Boyd Burris. Boyd is, Boyd is a student at Elon University. He actually took my class last semester, and he still wanted to come back from war, so he'll be with us through an internship through the J-Term. So we appreciate Boyd being on here.
Pleasure to be here.
And I do want to mention the Burlington Fire Department Strategic Planning Process that is currently scheduled for January 21st at the Cronot Center. And Chief Lawrence, would you kind of introduce that?
Yeah, so we, we're really excited to be in a position now to revise our 2019 strategic plan that was for five years, and so we have contracted with the Center for Public Safety Excellence, who will be with us starting January 21st with our community stakeholders meeting, which you all have received information on, are invited to come and be a part of providing their input, their comments into the future developments of fire planning. Then after that day, we'll have three days internal with our staff to develop our strategic initiatives over the next five years. So really excited, it's a really good opportunity and time for us to sit down and start laying some ground with our plans about how we move forward, so we appreciate it and hope to have your input and role.
Good, and I think we received in our packet a document with QR code.
Yeah, I will say, too, is open to all the community, our business partners, our citizens and customers, because all that perspective is important to us, and that is in our social media, and we are actively receiving RSVPs from most of the people who participate. If you do plan on governing, please do let me know, respond via that QR code, so we have your information. Thank you.
And that's all I have to say. Okay, I just, I do have one item, and it kind of dovetails with City Manager's report. And Jennifer Eaton mentioned about our housing consortium that is getting kicked off, and part of the process is to establish an advisory board, this will be a multi-municipal group. So I think by the end of January...
Yes, sir.
We have to have a board member served up for appointment today, so to meet the deadlines. And it is by the, the end of January deadline?
I think we're good by the end of January, yes. Or at least mid-January, yeah, I suppose.
Yeah, so my point is, I'm going to have a work session, again, to have a conversation about it, and obviously, the person needs to, if possible, kind of like when we're talking about board of adjustments, there's a lot of cursory knowledge that's helpful. I think housing knowledge is going to be very helpful, and perhaps PHA prior. So I've, I've got one name I'm going to provide, but if anybody has a name, please get that to Craig.
That'd be fine.
And we can reach out to try to settle that. It's just a deadline that we need to meet.
All right, it is, we'll be in quarterly meetings, so around March.
Any questions on that? Okay, we'll move into, it would not be fair to run if we did not move to O'Hare, which is requested for a session.
How many votes you have? What do you have? You want to say your answer? I think we've given David Hutton way too much time.
On behalf of the City Manager, I would like to request the City Council...
No. It's got snow night. Would you change it, bud? Going to a very short location.
Very short intersection. Assuming 143, 318-11A4, discuss matters regarding locations, expansion of industries, including agreement on finish the list of economic development incentives, or maybe offer of economic negotiation, assuming NCGS 158-7. So we have a request, this is a motion.
So move.
Have a motion to approve the request, enter it in closed session, sir. Second, have a motion on second oral in favor, signify by aye. Any comments? All right, we are now in closed session.